The U.S. and its allies are considering a ban on Russian oil exports. Oil has been this high, hasn't been this high since the sharp rise the summer before the 2008 mortgage crisis. Marketplace's Nova Safo reports.
Secretary of State Antony Blinken says the U.S. and European countries are exploring a ban on Russian oil, something they have taken pains to avoid in the sanctions imposed so far. He spoke on NBC's Meet the Press.
We are now in very active discussions with our European partners about banning the import of Russian oil to our countries while, of course, at the same time maintaining a steady global supply of oil.
Russia is the world's third-largest oil producer after the U.S. and Saudi Arabia. The prospect of removing its 5 million barrels in exports every day from the global market is already pushing up oil prices. Gasoline prices are rising, too. The U.S. average for a gallon of regular gas topped $4 a gallon over the weekend for the first time since 2008. I'm Nova Safo for Marketplace.
Indeed, retail gas prices are up 11% from a week ago, according to AAA. It's averaging $5.29 a gallon in California now. A separate calculation by the online site GasBuddy finds it's the biggest one-week increase since the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina in 2005. Three of the biggest accounting firms, EY, PWC, and KPMG, have cut their Russian operations out of their global networks. You know, companies that once upon a time were branded Ernst &amp; Young, Pricewaterhouse &amp; Pete Marwick. The BBC's Simon Jones has more.
KPMG, which employs 4,500 people in Russia and Belarus, said it had a responsibility to respond to Russia's violation of international law. As a result, it will sever ties with its businesses there. PWC, which has been operating in Russia for 30 years and has 3,700 members of staff in the country, said it was horrified by Moscow's senseless war, and the company's focus would now shift to supporting its employees in Ukraine. The accountancy firms are the latest businesses to pull out of Russia. Visa, MasterCard, American Express, and Samsung have all suspended operations there in the last few days.
Meanwhile, the owner of the Japanese clothing company Uniqlo says it'll keep its stores open in Russia. Here's the quote from Tadashi Yanai, the CEO of Uniqlo's parent company. "Clothing is a necessity of life. People in Russia have the same right to live as we do." Right now, Dow, S&amp;P, and Nasdaq futures are all down in the 6 to 7 tenths of a percent range. The S&amp;P 500 is down 9.8% year so far. Russia's stock market is still closed today with news on this promised for Wednesday.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by C3AI. C3AI software enables organizations to use artificial intelligence at enterprise scale, solving previously unsolvable business problems. Learn more at c3.ai. This is Enterprise AI. And by Parametric, helping financial advisors combine broad-market diversification with active systematic tax management. Learn more about custom direct indexing at customtothecore.com. And by GEP. GEP software helps global 2,000 enterprises transform their supply chains for greater agility and resilience with complete visibility and better control.
It's a year ago this week when NFTs, non-fungible tokens, hit the big time, when a video artist named Beeple used one to sell rights to what he called an original for $69 million. Well, since then, a reported $44 billion has been spent on NFTs, but only a few get the big bucks on those, according to a new calculation. New York Times contributor and art critic Blake Gopnik is here to discuss. He wrote a piece in The Times about this. Blake, welcome.
Hi, David. Always a pleasure to be on.
Yeah, Blake, a year ago, you and I were talking, and, you know, we'd say NFT, and it was like I was speaking particle physics. Now, every cool kid wants an NFT, right?
Yeah, they think they want an NFT, but the weird thing is that people still don't actually know what NFTs are. It kind of shocks me that they have completely fictional notions of what an NFT is.
Yeah, it's interesting. I mean, I initially wondered if they were a license to print money. What have you found?
They're definitely a license to print money. I also think they're a license to be something close to fraudulent. There's all this talk about NFT art, but in fact, when you scratch the surface a little bit, it turns out there is no such thing as NFT art. There's just these things called NFTs, and there's certificates there, certificates of ownership, and you can attach it to anything. You can attach it to a lousy sentimental illustration by the late Thomas Kinkade or to a radical conceptual art piece by Hans Haka. There is no limit to the kind of things you can attach an NFT to, so there is no such thing as NFT art.
But, 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 right? If you're a digital artist, there's this problem of what's the real one? What's the first one? What are copies? And there was a thought that maybe this technique through NFTs could help digital artists make a little more money.
You know, it looked as though NFTs might help serious digital artists make more money, but what really has turned out to be the situation is that NFTs are not about the image that has been NFTed, they're about the NFT itself. Imagine if you're collecting baseball cards, right? You get a 1916 Babe Ruth. You're not collecting it because it's a picture of Babe Ruth, you're collecting it just because it's a collectible. So this is just about collecting.
The Runox City School Board and joint meeting, a joint meeting with Runox City Public Schools is hereby called to order, and I'll ask our clerk to please call the row.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Bessepitch.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here, and the call is present. Now, I will ask our school board and, Dr. Jamison, where are you? Okay. All right. If you'd please call the row of the school board.
Yes, Ms. Paul, would you please call the row?
Mrs. Casola.
Here.
Mr. Kathy.
Here.
Mr. Cherry.
Here.
Dr. Jamison.
Here.
Ms. Saunders. Mrs. Watkins.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everybody, to this joint meeting. It's good to see you all here. I don't know, well, this is our first meeting of the year, isn't it? We communicate so much to each other, I'm sure to sometimes realize that, but we're welcome everybody here, and I'm pleased to recognize Vice Chairman Jamison, who will be carrying on for Chairman Aserius Smith. So, thank you all, and school board members, and superintendent, and the staff. Welcome, and hopefully we'll have a very good discussion. Most of you probably know, we are not going to do the tour this time because of the possible length of the agenda on our meeting, and then we got a pretty long agenda today for us, so hopefully we can put that on for another time. But we do look forward to going across the street and taking a look at the new building. All right? With that, I will ask Vice Chair Jamison, if she has any welcoming remarks that she would like to make, and we'll go from there. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, we just want to thank you for hosting us today as well as to take a moment to thank you for your patience with rescheduling this meeting from January to today so that more of us could be present. As you know, the issues and the environment facing school boards across the country have been fraught for two years, and given the challenges and opportunities posted by the post from the pandemic, changing policies and local conditions, we know that it's more important than ever to keep these lines of communication open with you and continue our open, our healthy, and transparent communication. So, thank you for taking the time and to ensure, and your commitment and ongoing support for our students, families, parents, staff, and our school system. We really appreciate the opportunity to discuss these issues with you today, and we appreciate your continued leadership. So, thank you, and with that, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. All right. Well, we have a list of items for discussion by council and by school board trustees, and at this time, I want to recognize Superintendent White for any comments, and then I'll call on council members for their item. Good morning, Superintendent.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor White Boyd, Vice Chair Jamison, to the City Council, and to our school board members. Good morning, everyone. I'd also like to say good morning and welcome to staff members that I have with us in attendance today, so if they could just raise their hands as I introduce them. We have Archie Freeman, our chief academic officer, Mr. Chris Perkins, our chief operations officer, Mrs. Kathleen Jackson, chief financial officer, Mr. Dominic McKee, our chief of human resources, Dr. Alan Seabird, constituent services and governmental relations officer, Kelly Sandrich, our executive director of communications and marketing, and Cindy Pullton, our executive assistant and school board clerk. So, thank you for joining me today. So, we're excited this morning, and I know that I'm here to talk about strategic initiatives as our first bullet item today in Runox City Public Schools. We are excited by the momentum that we're seeing in our school system right now, and you have a lot to do with that. And so, it is my pleasure to share all of the wonderful things that we have going on. Three main strategic initiatives, though, that I believe you would want to be aware of, and I think that our public should know about. We have gotten a lot accomplished in the past year and a half, and so, and we've gotten those things done, and we continue to get things done because as a community, we pull together as one body to get things done for our children. And so, to that end, I want to again thank all of you for your leadership. I want to thank our council as well as our school board members. As the saying goes, what gets governed gets done. So, I just want to thank you for your ongoing support and for your leadership. I also want to take a moment to thank our teachers and our parents, administrators, our staff members as well, who are working very hard every day to make sure that students are receiving the academic, the physical, and social-emotional support that they need, particularly during this past tough two years with COVID-19. So, turning to our strategic initiatives, I want to share a few things of which we are very proud. Our school board approved our six-year strategic plan. I believe you have that in your folders, and it is, it's a spiral ring belt. Yes, you have that. I see that you have it with you in your folders. They approved our plan on February 22nd, and as you know, the development of a comprehensive strategic plan, if done correctly, is quite an undertaking. But we are fortunate, however, because we have had the benefit of multiple stakeholders working with us collectively to determine the what, why, and the how of our plan. And I again want to thank our, we had many stakeholders serve on our Destination 2030 Strategic Planning Committee, including teachers and students, parents, administrators. We had members from the higher ed community. We had community partners and community agencies. Some of you served on that committee as well, council members, school board members. And so, our plan is entitled "The Roadmap to Student Success." So, for the members of the public, our plan can be found on our website at www.rcpss.info. And in addition to the critical vision, mission, and core values that are kind of the front matter of the plan and really bind the plan together, this plan also outlines the seven pathways, and the pathways are our goals to get us to our destination. So, these pathways are how we plan to arrive at our destination of graduating our students with an earned diploma and a resume of skills and experiences that we believe will carry them for the rest of their lives. Again, there are seven pathways or seven goals that are included in the document that serve as our main priorities moving forward over the next six years. The targets that you see there support the pathways, and the strategies support the targets, and the measures that you see there are how we're planning to hold ourselves accountable. And so, the main pathways, and I'll just go through them briefly, as I know that you have them in front of you, you also have a pocket guide in your folder as well so that if you want to take it along your travels, you'll have that with you. But our first pathway is that of early literacy, ensuring that our students are reading on or above grade level by grade three. Our second pathway is academics, doing our level best to eliminate achievement and opportunity gaps between and among our children, and accelerating academic growth for all students, particularly in the areas of reading and math. The third pathway is post-secondary success, and this means improving access to and achievement in advanced courses as well as our career technical education courses, while also increasing our on-time graduation rates overall and by reporting group. We also have a pathway for overall well-being and a sense of belonging. We know that when children feel connected, they're more likely to stay in school, they're more likely to thrive in school. So, this is fostering an inclusive, safe, and welcoming learning environment for our students, for our staff members, and for our families. This is investing in the whole child by promoting participation in the athletics, in the arts, and in school clubs and things that interest them to keep them connected. Our next pathway is communications and community engagement. Again, this document wouldn't even be possible without our community's engagement. So, this means openly communicating with all students' families and the community by utilizing multiple channels and languages and providing timely information to our communities. They deserve that. And by facilitating family outreach and engagement opportunities that foster an inclusive culture for our students. The next pathway or goal is recruitment, retention, and talent development. This means actively recruiting talent to create and maintain a highly effective and diverse workforce. So, we are committed to knowing our employees and learning what matters to them and aligning our supports to their specific needs. And last but surely not least is the pathway for operations. So, as good stewards, we have to provide equitable and universal access to safe, healthy, and secure environments for our children. And by making sure that our outsourced vendor partners meet the expectations that are outlined in their contractual agreements, and I know that we have our vendor partners on our agenda for today. So, this plan gives all of our stakeholders a look at where we are currently for each of these strategies. If you'll look across on the chart, it shows whether or not we are in the planning stage, implementation stage, or the refinement stage. And prior to obtaining approval for this plan, we did have multiple focus groups, but then we went a step farther than that. We sent out the plan, and we had it accessible to the greater Runox community to ask for their feedback, to say, you know, is this the plan that will, that will get our graduates to be the graduate that we want them to be upon graduation? And so, we asked the community for their feedback. We had over 150 suggestions from the community, so we're really proud of that. And so, if you gave your, gave up your time to give us a suggestion, we would just want to thank you for that and know that many of those suggestions, if not most, are embedded in the plan that you see today that has been approved. So, we will reexamine the plan every two years, that's why it's a six-year plan, and we will progress monitor to see if we're still on track to meeting our goals, as we call it Destination 2030. The second strategic initiative that I would like to share with you that you also have in your package, we're excited about our capital plan. And so, again, I'd like to thank our school board for their approval of the capital plan on the 22nd. This year, our approach was a bit different than in years past. As we continue to strive for greater fairness and equity and transparency in our processes, we have used an equity lens to prioritize our capital projects. We have also taken into consideration discussions held by this council and the school board. So, to that end, the plan also includes a 10-year look ahead. So, if you'll recall, last summer, we talked about the need for a 10-year look ahead for, to prioritize our projects so that our communities will know, for the most part, when they can expect improvements to their schoolhouse and to their school facilities. So, I want to thank Mr. Perkins and Dr. Brenda Russ for their diligence with convening a CIP team and using the equity indicators and guiding questions to determine the best and fair ways to prioritize our projects. This team that was convened, this equity team, they prioritize the projects based on guiding questions. So, they had questions on equity, for instance. How does the proposed project better serve students and communities that have traditionally been underserved? Those are some of the kinds of guiding questions that they used. They use questions about the environment and required work. For example, does this project serve to repair or replace an existing deteriorated facility? They ask questions about health and safety. How does this project improve public safety and health benefits to RCPs students and community? And they also ask shovel-ready and economy questions. For instance, is this project coordinated in its scheduling with other related capital projects? Again, does it make sense? And then, those projects were then ranked and scored based on their equity score, and that's how, that list that you have in your packet, that prioritize list, that's where that has come from. I just, I believe that this capital plan, it is fair, it is equitable, it is transparent. These, all of this information is available for our public on our website as well, and we think that that's, I'm proud of that, and I'm proud of that. I think it's a wonderful feat. It was definitely a huge undertaking, but our team took it seriously, and they put together a comprehensive capital plan. Our third strategic initiative, and then I promise I will yield, is, would not be, you know, all of these other strategic initiatives would not be possible without funding, of course, and we believe that that is a strategic initiative in itself. I do want to thank our city council again for your fiscal commitment to RCPs, and thank our school board for your support and leadership. Our categorical budget was approved by our school board on February 22nd as well, and while we're still waiting to see what will happen in the general assembly, we are proud of our fiscal forecasting and management. As good fiscal stewards of taxpayer dollars, we are very careful to prioritize our efforts. So, to that end, I want to take a moment to thank Mrs. Kathleen Jackson and her team for their continued hard work, as well as thanks to our teachers and staff members and administrative central office staff. They shared with us those things that are most important to enhance and improve the teaching and learning process, and that's how we've built our budget. Our main priorities in our budget are focused on efforts such as hiring more staff to reduce class sizes, increasing starting salaries and compensation for our employees, staying current and up-to-date on curricular and technology resources for our students. They need up-to-date resources. And increasing our efforts related to employee recruitment and retention, increasing substitute pay, and aligning our budget with our strategic plan. So, in your folder, you will find a budget update, and it's for fiscal year 2022, 2023. This is where we outline our reasoning and rationale for each priority. The first is related to establishing a fully-staffed and highly-quality workforce. Fewer people, as you know, are choosing the profession of teaching, unfortunately, today, so we do have to incentivize, and we have to encourage and motivate, and we want to also reward and value and recognize our committed staff members who have, who are staying and who are in classrooms right now. And so, at the bottom of page one, you will see how Runox City currently compares to the surrounding counties for starting pay. On the following page, you'll find starting and ending salaries that have been adjusted for inflation. So, as you can see, we needed to increase our salaries to stay competitive, but again, also to show our employees how much we value and appreciate them. The same is true for our classified staff, moving their starting pay to $15 an hour and shifting the scale upward accordingly. And on the third page, you'll find our rationale for our other priorities such as reducing class sizes, particularly in the core content areas, expanding career and technical education programs for our high school students, updating our resources to align with state standards. And on the last page, you'll find more information on our capital plan priorities as well as efforts to support the whole child, such as expanding our AVID program. Keep in mind that AVID stands for Advancement via Individual Determination, and this is a college readiness program that teaches our children how to study, how to take Cornell notes, how to apply for college, how to apply for scholarships, and so, and how to debate as well. So, certainly, the investment is, well, you'll see there in our youth development and intervention coordinator to work in conjunction with the city's efforts to keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on in our schools and steering our children in productive ways. So, as you can see, we're proud of the work that we're doing, and we do have a tremendous team and outstanding students. So, that concludes my portion on strategic initiatives, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions? Mr. Bessepitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Superintendent White, for an excellent report. I really admire the fact that you're shooting high in terms of the graduation rate, but you're shooting way beyond that in terms of career preparation once our students complete high school. The CIP chart that you've provided shows five years. You mentioned a 10-year plan. Is there additional information on your website that we could look at?
Absolutely. So, the five-year plan was approved, but we also have a 10-year outlook that goes from now all the way through to 2032, and so, that is on our website as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Good morning, Superintendent.
Good morning.
I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for the report, but I did sit on the strategic plan committee, and I just strongly want to commend you and your staff for the great work you did on generating the plan. You did include everyone, almost everyone, in the community, diverse communities, demographic-wise, even age-wise, in making sure that we can create a plan to help our children move forward. So, I just wanted to say, I really commend you guys for the great, fantastic job you did in putting this together.
Thank you, and thank you for sitting on the committee. We appreciate it.
No, my pleasure, and I totally agree with everything you're putting together, and I just wanted to commend you on that.
Thank you.
Superintendent, I've just been listening to your, we're only strategic initiative. Let me ask you, what is your current student-teacher ratio, and how does that compare to the schools that you've mentioned here?
Yeah, our student-teacher ratio right now is probably about 28 to 1, but many of our classes are falling over 30 students to 1. So, we're trying to get closer and closer to 25 to 1 for our student-teacher ratio. And I, you know, there are some who would say in the research that class size doesn't matter, and I would say then they haven't graded a lot of papers. So, class size does matter when it comes to building relationships with students, when it comes to teachers' workload, so we are trying to make sure that we get closer and closer to a reasonable class size, particularly in the core content areas that we know are tested areas that are, that are extremely stressful. that are, that are extremely stressful many times for our teachers. So we're moving right along and we're heading in that direction.
Okay. Does that compare, do you compare favorably with what's in the area?
Well, I don't know the other class sizes in the area. I'd have to check that, Kathleen. Do we know, we'll have to, we'll have to get that information for you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have to see what their teacher ratio is.
Okay. All right. So I have, we have an agenda, some items that each council member has submitted. And what I will do is ask them to explain their questions so they'll know, make sure that it's, what we're reading is what they're asking. So Councilmember Moon Reynolds, you have the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My item is the student representation on the school board. I know you all had some discussions in past meetings. And I just want to know, could you explain or expand on what you plan to do with the school representation? How that is to work out, having representation on the board with a student?
Sure, absolutely. And thanks for giving us the opportunity to talk about it because I think we are all so excited about this. This is an idea that actually, I believe, started when Mr. Spencer was still with us. And we are thrilled to finally pass a policy, I believe it was at our first February meeting, when we had our final signing. We had our first read, I believe, in December or January. So we actually have gone from discussions to policy. And in a second, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cherry, who will tell you a little bit about, he's already out there with Ms. Saunders recruiting. The, our student representatives will be one from each high school. Our student representatives are non-voting members. And we, of course, because they are still students and have certain curfews on how long they can stay at a meeting if we end up in a very long one, for example. But there's lots of opportunities. We're looking really forward to having that student voice and that representation in our conversations as we prepare for our issues to understand better how these members, and they'll be members from our high schools. They'll serve one-year terms. And there's a, there's quite a delineated process they go through. They'll submit an application, then they'll do an essay, either written or video. We conscientiously, importantly, decided that it could come in either form. And then they'll have an interview with our, with our, we've identified two leads on this process on the board, who will be their mentors as well as the advocates in the schools for the program. So that's where we're at right now. Does that, does that provide you?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I'd like to ask Mr. Cherry, if that's all right, to kind of, he and Ms. Saunders have been in the schools talking to our students about that. So I'd like to ask him if he'd say a few words about that experience.
Okay. And then I just have a question after that. Sure, he may answer it, but.
Yeah, sure.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Roanoke City Council. So about a week or two ago, we did visit William Fleming and we visited Patrick Henry High School. We talked to our rising seniors, and it was a really powerful time, a good moment. I guess it was a good way for us to kind of smell like sheep and kind of get amongst our student body and really let them know that, hey, we're here for you. There's more than a seat if you don't serve the people that you're serving. So I wanted to see them, wanted to touch them and give them an experience, talk to them about the opportunity, and also let them know what the requirements were. We sat there on the lunch period, which was pretty cool. So all the students came in that may not have wanted to ask a question during the presentation, a little shy, a little apprehensive. So really good way to just talk to the students and kind of push them a little bit because one of our requirements is that you must have a 2.0. And that is a low requirement, that is a low GPA. However, you never know, there may be a student that may not be as high achieving in their academics, but they have a lot of possibility and they have a lot of brightness inside of them that we want to push out and we want to nurture and cultivate. So we wanted to give them that opportunity, let them know that there is a chance for them to succeed and that we will be there to mentor them if they, you know, fall by the wayside because 2.0 is a low GPA. So it was just, it was a great time and I was glad and honored to be able to be amongst the student body.
Yes. I do like the idea of the 2.0.
Yes.
Rather than your four.
Absolutely.
Yes. That gives, that's a kind of an equal balance, I think so, too. When do you expect the student to take, take their seat? Is that going to be like July? Is that a fiscal year or you all be looking at a different time period?
Right. So the application process is open now. They'll be starting the same time in July 1st?
So it's July?
I believe they'll be at our first August meeting.
First August meeting, yep. So they'll be starting this upcoming school year after this one. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. And for, and I think Dr. Jameson may have said it and I missed it. With regards to your criteria that you're using
Yes.
and your selection panel, who, who will be making this determination as to who will serve?
So the school board will be coming together. Once we get all the applications, we'll discuss it. We'll talk about it and we'll make our decision from there. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moon, you still got the floor?
That was the only one I had, Mayor, for, for, for the school, student representation.
All right. We'll go to the next item. It's an item that I submitted. And I probably, I know I did this in the height of COVID-19, not as we are seemingly are today. And I was just concerned with the plans that you had because there were a lot of school systems that had problems with people becoming sick and, and not being able to at least drive buses and work in the cafeteria. And, and so bus drivers and sick leave and all those things, and vaccinations. How is that coming in the school system?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so again, we, we were hit, just like every other agency, pretty hard by COVID-19. But we did offer employees and community members various levels of support to, to support everybody during such an uncertain time, especially over the last two years. So that support came by way of having kind of designated sick days for employees. So for instance, if an employee tested positive or became symptomatic or even had an exposure, there was an allotment, an eight-day allotment for sick leave that we offered our employees. It was really important also to build in the bonuses, pay increases, and then additional planning time. We, for our teachers especially, we know that if, you know, they may have gotten sick or maybe members of their family or their children, or maybe they have been exposed. And then that meant that they were covering other classes and having to substitute in other classrooms. So then that strips away their planning time. And so we built in at least one full day per month throughout the fall and all the way through to spring break so that we could give our, our teachers and our educators, really, it's not just our classroom teachers, but many of our support staff as well, that additional layer of planning time that they said to us would be critically important, especially when they were strained. And then, of course, we've built in the bonuses. Our bus drivers, we provided bonuses, well, Durham provided bonuses, I should say, to their bus drivers. Certainly, we have worked in collaboration with them. And then making sure that we had really a clear path to vaccinations for our staff members and for our students. We even ran buses. I believe it was in December, it's in December where we picked up students and their family members and took them to Valley View so that they could get vaccinated because we know that that's the best way to prevent the disease itself. So just trying to have that type of outreach for our staff members and for our parents and for our kids so that we can promote vaccinations and then utilize all the health mitigation strategies as well, just to try to keep everybody healthy.
Well, let me say, I commend you and the school system on your handle that whole process. We didn't have some of the issues that other districts may have had. And that's the first time I've heard that you all picked up students and their families and
We did.
and took them to get vaccinated?
We did. We even went on Facebook Live to have to talk.
Wow.
To say, we have a bus for you. If you can't get there, we can get you there.
Wow. Well, thank you. That's awesome. That's real good. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item, we'll go to the next question. It comes from Vice Mayor Boer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure who might be able to answer this. I've spoken with our chair, Ms. Smith, and, and we talked about it. Back 2000, I was PTA president at William Ruffner and I tried to do school uniforms with the principal at the time, who was Dr. Linda Bigger Brown. Made a valiant effort, but it was not very well received. I spoke with Ms. Smith the other day and she said, there had been some other attempts made because I've gotten a lot of inquiries from parents. They think it might, you know, sort of minimize peer pressure and maybe help the kids focus if they weren't worried about who has the newest sneaker, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm not sure if we've made any efforts recently. And I, I just wanted to ask that question for some parents who had raised the question.
Sure. What I could, what I can tell you is, and thank you for the question, we actually have a school uniform policy. It was adopted in 2005, so I guess after your initial efforts. And what I can tell you is that it is a school-by-school initiated process. So if a parent is interested in, in school uniforms, they should contact their principal. And that begins a process that involves quite a delineated set of steps, which we're happy to, it's in our policy JS and then also we have a second policy about procedures, JSS, about how to go through, how to actually go through that. Ultimately, what it requires is every family eligible to be in that school after a series of public meetings, after a series of a lot of public information, as well as due diligence on sourcing uniforms, finding uniforms, making sure they're financially accessible, et cetera. It takes 70% of the eligible families to vote in the affirmative to implement a uniform policy at that school. And then there are also exceptions to the uniform policy on a case-by-case basis if that goes through. But that's the basic process. So if you have constituents who are interested in that, it first goes to the principal and then that initiates a series of public meetings that will ultimately end, and it's a year, at least a year-long planning process before it can be implemented, per our policy. This policy, actually, a little history I learned, and Mary Lee, you may have already known this. It was actually created by Dave Trinkle, former council, Dave Trinkle, and went through quite a rigorous public forum and informed equity base to make sure that it would be fair and equitable to all, all families involved in the, who might be impacted.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair. So it's, it sounds like a pretty cumbersome process and, and the parents would have to initiate it. Some parents would have to initiate it and then you would have to get consent or consensus from 70% of the families who are eligible?
Of the families, correct. It, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think that when you, I would say, it does sound like quite a time-consuming. I don't know if it, somebody.
It sounds like a lot, and that's probably why it hasn't happened.
It, it would require quite a few steps, ensuring that all the families who would be impacted are aware of and can consent to fully any change. I have done just a little bit of research on school uniforms nationwide. And I, I would, I would submit, based on what I've read, having this level of process is in everybody's best interest because there is a lot of contention around the issue of school uniforms. It is not a simple implementation or easy answer for many families. And people feel very strongly on both sides of this particular question. So I think in the sake of hearing the voice of your community, it is, actually, there are a lot of steps, but all the steps are geared towards open and ongoing communication between the people who would be directly impacted and those who live in that community. Because these would not be, it is not state-funded uniforms. This is, this shifts the burden to, to the family.
To the families, right. Thank you.
Well, let me just say, one of the drivers, and I was looking around the room to see who was here other than me at the time we discussed this. And because I think it came out of the fact that no tell-alternative school, those kids wore uniforms, khakis and certain things. And so there was a driver maybe to push that on into the other schools. But here, it is a lot of things that you have to do and it's challenging. And when we do it, when we did it, probably had a room full of parents or something. And so it, he just felt it wasn't worth the effort to do that. But I did think it worked for a while with the alternative school and they, it was very impressive. And there were some school, public schools doing that. But that's what happened with that. And I know Cindy was around when we were doing that. All right. You got another question?
Yes, I do. Also, you may or may not know that I am also the chair of the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board. We had a public hearing last Thursday and we had a resident to speak last Thursday at the public hearing in reference to vaccinations and the inequity. And in particular, with the five-year-olds and up who are eligible now, so it's the younger children. She indicated that at her school, which happens to be in South Roanoke, the majority of the kids are vaccinated. Not so much the case in some of the other schools in some of the other parts of the city. And we were wondering if there's something we can do. And I know Superintendent White mentioned some of the, some of the things that they're doing. Is there a campaign or, or focus on that segment? Because she brought it up as a, as an issue of inequity at our meeting, at our public hearing.
Yes, absolutely. We've been campaigning. We've been putting a big push out there through various messaging, through our robo calls, through our Facebook Live, encouraging anyone. As you know, we have a really strong partnership with the Virginia Department of Health as well. But I think the concern is, you know, a valid, a valid concern. We do still have parents who are hesitant and who are worried about the vaccination. But we do encourage vaccinations for everyone who's eligible. Yes.
I appreciate that and, and thank you for saying that publicly because they watch, you know, our, our meetings. And it came to us as, as an issue through the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board. Not sure how we're going to handle that, if we can handle it at all. I mean, there may not be anything we can do with it. But I thought I would mention it since we are in this meeting today that that did come forward in our public hearing last Thursday. Thank you.
No, thank you. Absolutely. So thank you for that. We did, and we have implemented the test-to-stay program. So this is where students can stay in school. We do make sure that they are able to do their kind of surveillance testing, if you will, at home. And then they can stay in school without quarantining if, you know, they can prove that they are still negative after they take those tests. But they do have to wear a mask for five days if they're in the test-to-stay program. So right now, we know that masks are optional for parents. But we do, but they are recommended, but they are still optional at this point. But they do have to wear a mask if they're in the test-to-stay program. But that is another way that we're keeping kids in school and trying to keep them safe.
Thank you. That was one of my original questions and I removed it because you all contacted me and gave me the plan and how it's working. And so I was really happy to hear that. So I removed it from the list. But thank you for bringing that information forward because other folks may want to hear that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. You mentioned the mask in the schools and some parents, you know, they have that option. Most of the students wearing the mask, are they required, your policy?
They're not required.
So some of the students in the schools are not wearing masks or some, the parent's option, I guess.
Right. Parents have the option of making sure that they, they can do what they feel works best for them and for their families. But as added layer of mitigation for our teachers and parents who might feel uncomfortable that there are some students masks and masks in some students who are not masked, we did put HEPA air purifiers in every classroom. We have provided KN95 masks for all staff members and for our students. So we honor that kind of the option for the parents, but we're also committed to keeping everyone's healthy and safe. So trying to make sure that people feel safe and secure and also honoring parents' option to be masked.
And since the parents have that option, has the numbers increased? Are they staying about the same with kids without masks versus those that are wearing?
We had a better handle on that. I'm just going to say that when we had parents electing in, which was the original legislation under Senate Bill 739, where parents had to elect to have their students unmask, if you will. And at that time, we had about 700 of our 14,000 students elect to not, to opt out of mask wearing. Since the CDC has now changed has now changed its guidance and has recommended that it is optional, it's a little harder for us to have those numbers, to nail those numbers down. But that's, the original numbers showed that a lot of our parents still wanted their children to wear a mask.
Right.
All right. Thank you. Our next question comes from you again, Ms. Moon.
Thank you. I appreciate the outsourcing report, but I just wanted someone to elaborate on each, each of the services that'll be in outsourced for the public to hear.
Absolutely.
Where we are adding that, please.
Thank you, thank you. So let me just say, first and foremost, that we appreciate our vendor partners. So we, you know, we believe that the school system is broken into kind of two houses, right? We have the instructional side, and we have our operational side. One can't run without the other. So we are really appreciative of all of our vendor partners, and our operations crew overall, because without them, we just, we could not run. And so we do currently outsource for, for transportation, for food services, for our nurses, substitutes, our crossing guards. And in December, as you mentioned, we did have a, an outsourcing report. We gave an outsourcing report to our school board. That's at the December 14th meeting. So if you want to go back and look into board docs, you can find the full report there, and you'll be able to see the, the report in its entirety. Just as a summary and as an overview, and I am referencing the outsourcing report that you should have gotten, you should have gotten ahead of time. And again, that's from the December 14th meeting. Just as, in a nutshell, for food and nutrition services, we do partner with Sedexo Magic. And in partnering with them, they have been absolutely incredible partners for us and with us, serving so many, $3.6 million in, and with our local vendors, and making sure that all of our students have the benefit of healthy meals. In our partnership with them, they have increased their meal variety and access to meals for our students. They have provided curbside meal service, especially during the pandemic, when our students were not able to come to school in person. They did have that curbside meal service for us. They do that curbside meal service all the way through some, many of the holiday times. I just, I remember last year, spring break, our parents who would be in need of that food assistance, they were able to come through and get food that would carry them through the spring break. Such, such an important service. And a summertime service as well. We do have our crossing guards as well, who are outsourced. And so as of November 30th, there were 13 elementary schools, five middle schools, and one bus stop covered for a total of 24 crossing locations. There, we had one school without a crossing guard that has been covered by our staff and SROs who have been working with us as well. And so we are really appreciative of our crossing guards, and we, again, want to make sure that our students are getting to school safely. In your report, you'll also find information, our student health services, these are our nurses. And I always give a shout out to our nurses, especially during this pandemic. Our nurses have had to handle not only COVID-19, but all of the other bumps, scrapes, bruises, and upset stomachs that they would have on any, in any given year. So we are thankful to Carillion for their partnership and providing for us a nurse manager and a nurse preceptor who do the, who will do the training for us and serve as a substitute nurse when we need that type of support as well. So we're incredibly grateful for our school nurses. The next page, you'll find information on our substitutes. We do partner with ESS, and currently, well, as of November 30th, which was our last report, we had 136 active subs. 119 of those are teachers, 35 building-based, 18 long-term, and 66 daily substitutes. That we have 14 instructional assistants, two clerical, and one custodial. So again, we are grateful. We know that with COVID-19, it was hard for them to keep up with the number of substitutes that we needed. And so I do, again, want to thank our teachers many times who have had to cover for each other. We do, we, we're trying to make sure that they're compensated for that. And, but there's no real substitute for that classroom teacher, but for our high-quality substitutes, we do appreciate you for being there and filling in the gap when we need you most. And so we are appreciative of our substitute coverage and our ESS vendor there. And then certainly, we also have transportation. We have a partnership with Durham Bus Services. And, and again, our bus drivers were hit pretty hard with COVID. We know that we've had several bus drivers out. I just want to take a minute to thank all of our parents who have been working with us and who have been so incredibly patient. I know that, you know, when you're, I know what it's like, as a parent, to wait for the bus, right? And you're waiting for the bus, and you're not quite sure. And so our, our parents who have had to transport students to school, or our parents who have been very patient, I just want to thank you. I know that Durham has been working vigilantly to offer bonuses and incentives and various programs to make sure that we have our bus drivers on staff, but we want to make sure that they're healthy as well, and that they're incentivized to, to make sure that they're transporting kids every day. So we're grateful for, for that partnership. Again, these vendor partners help us to focus on the teaching and learning process. So we are incredibly grateful for all of these vendor partners who work with us to maintain a safe and healthy learning environment for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go.
Thank you, Ms. White. I wonder, I just had a couple of quick follow-ups on that. On substitutes, what is the process that someone can go through if someone in the community believes they have the skills that, and they want to offer and support as a substitute? What's the basic process they go through to do that?
What I'm looking up, Councilmember Cobb, is we actually have a job fair with ESS coming up. And as soon as I can find this while we're talking, I will give that to you. And it's a very simple process. ESS has been wonderful working with us. And, okay, well, I've got it right here, because I just got the email this morning. I'll tell you what, I'll find it, and I'll text it to you.
Thank you.
I have the email this morning. We have a job fair, and it's really easy. All they got to do is show up to the job fair, ESS will work it out, and they'll get it set up.
Excellent, excellent. Well, social media is great, except when you can't find anything.
I know, I know.
The other question I had was regarding transportation. And I know that Durham has been working hard to not only find drivers, but to sustain drivers. I know that maybe two years ago now, there was a lot of conversation about Rotek students being eligible for internships, but not having transportation to them. And I think one of the original goals was that Durham would provide that link.
Yes.
And I just wanted to see what the status of that is, because I, we had the businesses ready, we had the students ready, but because the students didn't have transportation access based on the times that the businesses needed them, we were hopeful that there could be a community-based solution. And my understanding was Durham wanted to help be a part of that, but can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I believe that's been resolved, correct?
That has been resolved. We have vans. We have 15 passenger vans and buses, or excuse me, small vans and, and passenger vans, 15 passenger buses that will, we can arrange for that in those times. We have shared that to Virginia Western Water Authority, and we're prepared, as those internships are opened up, to provide that.
And thank you again for bringing that to attention. I remember that conversation from last summer, and we were able to resolve that issue, and so thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Good. Thank you. Glad to hear that.
All right, is that, all right, we'll move to the next item then, and that goes to Councilmember Jeffrey. Excuse me, my glasses are fogging up. All I see is glaze. Real, two quex, two quick questions. One is quick. The annual outsourcing report, is that going to be online?
It is online.
It is online. Okay, thank you. My second question is, with the financial, I'm curious about the financial status of the school board. With the acquisition of the new building and school renovations, and so it's, it's going to be a lot of expense. And I'm curious, are you going to need, the school board is going to need additional funding beyond the 40%?
Well, again, let me thank you again for the 40%, because that really keeps us operational with our program. We do believe that we are in good financial standing. Moving forward, I would just simply say that I think we have opportunities available to us to partner, for instance, with Wrenckin Park and with our library services. Those things that we are looking to do in our Community Empowerment Center, when we have library and laundry services, when we're looking at the various ways to engage our, our students in the community. So that, when you talk about additional funding, I think that there are additional partnership opportunities that we could take advantage of and that we could benefit from on both sides, on, from the city side, as well as the school-community side as well. And so for the fiscal standing, the financial standing piece, I will ask Mrs. Jackson if she'll just come up and give all of you and the public just a broad overview of where we are, so that you'll have the specifics on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, and thank you for that question, Councilwoman Jeffrey. And that, that is something that we, that we take very seriously in making sure that we're being good stewards of the public's money. You have that summary of where we are with our current year budget in your packet. And, but in terms of particularly funding capital needs, that is something that actually, we, we have taken the, the recommendations of, of City Council and, and City Administration, and created a Capital Projects Fund this year to make sure that we can, can leverage our local funding to help us with those capital needs as well. So that is something you mentioned with the, the purchase of the new building and, and renovation needs, that is enabling us to do that, and, and looking ahead beyond five years with our capital improvement plan to make sure that we, we are using our capital funds appropriately and, and sticking within that $5 million as much as possible for capital improvement, so that we can use those local funds when we have them available to help us move forward capital improvements, perhaps sooner than we might otherwise be able to. In terms of just overall operating budgets, we are still, as Mrs. White shared earlier, there's still a lot we don't know about, about state funding. The introduced budget for this year was certainly favorable for schools. I'm not sure if it, with the effect of inflation, which is in that budget information that we shared, I'm not sure if it quite gets us up to where we would have been had some of those cuts not happened when the recession happened. But nonetheless, that is a very favorable budget. The, the Senate version is actually, would be a little bit better for our, our local school division. The House version is quite a bit less. So that, that puts us in kind of an interesting position right now of, of trying to look at best-case scenario and worst-case scenario in, in terms of, of meeting our school division's needs. But we are able to move forward with that, thanks in part to our fund balance, that we can leverage for other needs, particularly in the capital area, as I mentioned, so that if the, the least favorable version of state funding for schools comes through, then we are still prepared to move forward with some of these really important initiatives that we have, such as making sure that we're appropriately paying our, our school staff and that sort of thing. So, so certainly, if there are opportunities where the, the City Council wants to invest more in schools, we can certainly make good use of that. But I, I think we are in very good financial standing and, and very careful with the funds that we have to make sure that we're meeting our students' needs.
Thank you so much. And also want to thank School Board Member Mark Caffey for providing, my school board buddy, providing reports on a monthly basis, financial reports on a monthly basis. That does help to get a clear understanding of what's going on. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Bestfish.
If I might just follow up on that a little bit, on the, on the CIP handout that you gave us, when we say local funds in these green columns and, and fund balance, we're talking about the same thing, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
Funding that we would be putting towards capital needs out of our, our local fund allocation, yes, sir.
Right. And so obviously, these are projections, and, you know, various things can happen with other funding sources and, and so forth. But what this tells me is that, given the 40% funding formula, you expect to be able, and I, I didn't get my calculator out, but it looks like $35 or $36 million over the next five years in fund balance that can go towards these capital projects, so.
That is our goal, both through potential use of fund balance, if we have a, an availability at the end of the year, but also intentional budgeting for capital needs as we go forward. And, and sort of how we looked at that is looking at what our budget is for our debt service, because the school board does have to pay the full debt service for all of the school projects that we fund through debt. So if, if we can balance that a little bit better and, and not rely quite so heavily, unless it's one of the, a bigger project, for example, where debt service makes more sense, then our, our debt service costs go down, we have funds available to, to more locally fund some of those projects and, and reduce our reliance on debt. That's our, that's our goal.
Yeah, and obviously, these may be amended as time goes on for any number of reasons, but right now, it looks like the 40% formula is putting you in pretty good shape when you, when you take the long view. And, and the other thing I should have asked earlier, at the bottom of that says, James Breckenridge Middle School Edition moved to ESER funding? Educate me, what is ESER?
That's Federal Pandemic Relief Funding, the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund. So the, the various forms of, of federal pandemic relief acts that came through for schools. And we are able to use a, a portion of those funds for improvements that include air quality, that include expanding instructional space. So we have received approval to expand instructional space at Breckenridge using those funds. So that took that off of either debt-funded or locally funded. And so that was certainly favorable in helping other projects be able to move forward, because we could use those funds for the Breckenridge project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, next question will come from Councilwoman Vivian Sanchez Jones. Matter of fact, you have both of the next two items.
Ms. White, first I want to start by complimenting you and the staff and the school board for this, for the long hours that it took to prepare the strategic plan 2028, 22 to 2028. Thank you. And also for the staff raises. Everybody's very happy about that, that I had spoken to, so. My question has to do with school safety. How does Roanoke City Public School plan to supplement the shortages of school resource officers? And have you considered the possibility of armed safety officers in the high schools?
Yeah, well, let me just start with a thank you again to our police department, as well as our sheriff's office. I know that they are feeling the squeeze, if you will, with being short-staffed as well. So we do want to thank our sheriff's office, especially by kind of filling in the gap with our SROs. For, for me, and in consultation with our team, we have not to date recommended arming our SSOs and our school security officers, because they haven't, for the most part, had the same training, intense training, as police officers have had. And so that has not been our recommendation to date. Certainly, if we do have exceptions to that rule, we could explore those opportunities. But to date, we want to make sure that if we're arming anyone in our school, that they have, that they're up to date, that they have the specialized training, and that they are, they understand child development, and that we're working with children. Even when children have beards and full mustaches, they're still children.
Well, maybe I should clarify something. I was thinking of, right now, we have about seven ex-police, retired police officers that are well-trained. Between them is probably about 120 years of experience. It's to those offices that I was, officers that I was referring to. I wasn't thinking of anybody that just come in and-
I wasn't thinking of anybody that just come in and applied to be a safety, a school safety officer to be having a gun, no. It's, it's with the retired officers that are able and in the best time of their, prime of their life to be able to, to carry a gun in case it was needed, to supplement.
Again, you know, and, and you know this, that I believe that safety is paramount and that we need to do everything that we can to keep our kids safe, keep our staff members safe as well. So if we have school security officers who have not been so far removed from their duty assignments, who have received the training and who are current and up to date, we can certainly explore those opportunities as well. But I don't want to stand here and make a commitment because I'd have to check on their specific credentials.
And I wouldn't want that for our children either.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all you have?
Yes.
I just got a follow-up question. Are there SROs in every school?
No, there are not. Currently, we have seven, I believe, where we had fourteen before.
We used to have seventeen, now we have a total of seven, five, one of the sheriff's office and two.
Okay, so, the high schools have an SRO, and the middle school?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
May I correct?
Yes, Ms. White.
Those five deputies are covering middle and elementary, so that's a total of twenty-two schools that they're covering.
May I have a follow-up question?
Sir?
Pardon?
May I have a follow-up?
Okay.
Mr. Perkins, how many sheriffs per elementary school?
Well, we only have five deputies currently. The sheriff is augmenting that with his civil process office or deputies that are on the road, and they are covering the seventeen elementary schools and the five middle schools for us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Perkins, and thank you, Superintendent White. That concludes all of the questions that council had, other than we are now having a presentation by Councilwoman Cobb.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones, did you have another one about the?
No.
No, okay, all right. Well, good morning, everybody. I want to thank the school board for being here, and I want to thank you all as well as administration for your partnership in our youth violence prevention efforts over the last couple of years. We've, we're certainly seeing, and last year was a very difficult year, and this year is already difficult for a lot of reasons. But I do want to express my appreciation for your engagement and your partnership. And I want to thank you for the opportunity, I believe on March twenty-second, to do a deeper dive into the, not only the assessment, but the current efforts that are underway in terms of youth violence prevention. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of things in this assessment today for you. I believe all the school board and staff have copies. I want to hand out a new document to council members that's coming down your way that is kind of an overview of the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Unit in the city, and I will talk about that in just a few minutes. For those of you who have the report, I'll reference a couple of pages just to give you reference, but I just wanted to remind the public and everyone that this assessment was made possible by the General Assembly, first through an act of legislation. It was initiated by Delegate Sia Price. And seven communities were identified as having an uptick and growth in terms of recognized gun violence and, and gang activity and gang violence among youth. And Roanoke was one of those communities. And so in addition to the legislation, there was funding made available through the state budget that was administered through the Department of Criminal Justice Services, and Roanoke received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant last year to conduct our first-ever Youth and Gang Violence Community Assessment. Through an RFP proposal, we identified EBS, Elite Business Strategies, to be our partners in creating, conducting, and implementing the survey. And so the first couple of pages are just the executive summary of that, but I wanted to point you to page three at the bottom. We worked really hard to reach as many people in our community as we could. This was done through surveys, it was a SOGO platform, and I want to thank the Roanoke City Schools for not only sharing that survey but making several robo calls, creating a link for that on your website. All of that was very helpful. We had a hundred and fourteen community leaders complete the survey. We had sixty-three youth-serving agencies participate in the survey. We had five hundred twenty-eight community residents complete the survey and two hundred fifty-nine students and youth. In addition to that, we conducted thirty-seven interviews. So we felt like our baseline was really solid as an initial pilot assessment. Our intention is to do this assessment on a regular basis, and one of the thoughts we're exploring is doing this in odd years, so not doing it the same year as the Youth Risk Behavioral Survey, but, but doing it in odd years. So our hope is that we can do this assessment again this fall, and we'd like for it to be even more robust. When I, when, when the Youth Risks Behavior Survey with, that's done between Blue Ridge Behavioral and Roanoke City Public Schools was presented to us, before we received this information, eighteen hundred sixth, eighth, tenth, and twelfth graders participated in the survey. As you can see here, we have two hundred fifty. So I want to work with you all, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission wants to work with the school system in a way that aligns with your protocols, which I think are very appropriate for, for parents to opt in or opt out, and to have enough advanced opportunity to, to share this out. And I also, it also would be helpful in terms of getting as much student participation as possible, similar to the Youth Risk Behavioral Survey, to have this done in collaboration with teachers in their classrooms. So I say that because we want as robust an assessment as we can get, and you'll see some of the reasons that I'm interested in that, and we're interested in that as we go through. On, beginning on page four and five, the first question's really had to do with school environment, and I think overall, our students feel good in the schools. They generally feel safe. We, I was very pleased at the number of youth that responded. Sixty-three percent of the youth who responded were ages fourteen through seventeen, so it's kind of that middle school, high school age range, which is what we were looking for, especially in terms of intervention. We specifically focused our outreach efforts on youth in the northwest area, and the reason for that is because, very clearly by the data and by the realities that we're experiencing in our community, the highest percentage of residents and youth impacted by gun violence are in northwest Roanoke. It's, last year, we had forty-seven incidents compared to the next one being twelve or thirteen. So it's disproportionate to that part of our city and, and our youth. So I was glad that we were able to hear from as many youth as we could. If you look at page six at the top, and, you don't, I apologize. I can, I can give you this, I have a few copies.
Oh, okay, we don't have, that's fine.
No, and I apologize, since I'd presented to you all before, I know you had the information, but here's an extra if you need it.
I'm sorry, I was trying to.
That's okay, I, again, I apologize. That's why I just wanted to highlight a couple of things today. At number ten, school environment questions. About fifteen percent of youth and students admit to at least one instance of gang violence at their school within the last six months. Again, I think these numbers are maybe a little lower than what is actual, but that's why it's important to get as much input from students and youth as possible. But they're also seeing this in their neighborhoods and in their community, so it's a combination of things. But I will say that the, the students either strongly agreed or agreed predominantly that their teachers are amazing and very engaged in looking out for them, that they listen, that they care, that they're respected by their teachers and their staff. And I wanted you all to hear that because I think that conveys a really important message. On page seven, again, we had a smaller number of people who actually, our youth who actually identified connection with gangs than we had hoped for, but we realized that in order to get that information, we need to have people who have trusted relationships with our youth, who can engage in these kinds of conversations to, to center their voices and their experiences. These just outline some of the reasons, or some of the current activity and whether or not they are involved. I want to draw your attention to page eight and nine. One of the interesting new findings that came forward, and this may not be new to you all in, in Roanoke City Public Schools, but it was, it was new to a lot of people in the community, and that is, in relation to violence, youth identified either strongly agreeing or agreeing that violence is a big problem in teen dating. And youth are really craving healthy relationships, instruction on healthy relationships, support regarding healthy relationships. And we know, especially this last year, that a number of the gun violence incidents were related, were domestic in nature, they were relationship-based. Not, not necessarily by state code of defined as domestic violence, but domestic in nature in terms of, of relationship and dating relationship. So that's an important factor. And then on page nine, primary motivations for, for joining a gang, protection, social bonding, and money. I also want to pause here to say, because there's a lot of conversation about this in the community, the language that this assessment was based on came from the legislation, Youth and Gang Violence Community Assessment. There's a distinction, and I think even our youth would say, some of them would, will talk openly about gangs and gang activity, some will talk openly about repping their hoods, and some will talk about family. So there are different words that are used to describe the realities here, and I want to be very clear about that. And I think it's important that we understand that, that one word doesn't necessarily describe the reality for all of our youth and their families. And that's something we're looking into as we prepare for this, the second assessment. So knowing that protection, social bonding, and, and money are some of the key reasons that youth are a part of gangs or hoods is then connected to what would help lead you from that. And employment opportunities were number one. They were far above recreation and sports, and that's on page eleven. Also, getting married, family responsibilities, those sorts of things. Again, that, that taps into the relational aspect. Those were just some things I wanted to highlight from the assessment. I'll go into more detail during our workshop. Again, we've presented this to city council and to the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, but I think sometimes a reminder of these realities is important. We're having ongoing meetings with youth service providers in the community, and RCPS has been very involved in that, and we're grateful for that, and we're going to continue to develop some of those initiatives. I just wanted to highlight on your other sheet, the one pager that I sent out, an overview of our Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Unit. Chris Roberts is, Chris, do you want to stand up, wave? Chris has been on the job nine months and is doing extraordinary work. One of our outreach workers is Antonio Stovall, who also teaches a couple of classes, one, two at, at William Fleming and now one at Noel C. Taylor Academy. Their focus is community engagement, prevention services, intervention services, and enrichment activities, and I want to highlight just a couple of things. This team, and we're in the process of hiring a second outreach worker, and these positions were made possible by a state grant, Gun Violence Intervention Program grant last year to hire these three positions. They are working very closely with the reset coordinator and volunteers. The reset team is led by Lloyd Merchant, and they go out after most, if not all, gun violence incidents in the community to talk with neighbors, to talk with business owners, to talk with people impacted. As they're able to connect with families, they do so. That's one of the primary roles that Chris and Antonio play, is connecting with these families to make sure they have the resources they need. They've established mental health relationships in the community, connecting people with mental health support services, and they're maintaining a strong relationship with the staff through programming at the Melrose Library and some other key areas in the community. In terms of prevention services, they have a very active caseload. It's very important to them that they work not only with the young person but with their family, that the whole family has support. And so that's, they're very intentional about the families that they are able to work with. They are developing and implementing, in addition to Noel C. Taylor, after-school programs, and they're hoping to partner with Forest Park Academy as one of those efforts. In terms of intervention, Chris is working to develop a group called Mind Movers. This is a violence interruption effort to work with previously incarcerated individuals who want to give back in a positive way to the community and support these efforts. These are credible messengers, these kinds of programs are proving to be very effective throughout the nation, and I'm grateful to Chris for taking the lead on creating that team. And then in terms of enrichment, they're partnering with Kirk Family Y to get the kids involved in, in recreation activities. They're working with the, with multiple partners in terms of youth employment, but one of the brand-new programs is an apprenticeship program with, with city departments where youth are hired to work in city departments, whether it's Parks and Rec or the libraries, other departments. And the Roanoke Arts, Roanoke Arts Commission will announce this afternoon an initiative for local artists, they can be youth, they can be adults, to bring the arts community into helping us address gun violence prevention in the community, and finally, eating and lifestyle workshops and strengthening relationships. So I just wanted to share with you that overview, and as I look ahead, I know Superintendent White, you mentioned that part of the strategy, it's on page fifteen, strategy nine, investing in and establishing youth development initiatives to create a sense of belonging, which is right on for all students and to deter gang affiliations. Two-fold question. First is, can you tell us a little bit more about that? And secondly, can we make sure that we are aligning our efforts in partnership to make sure that we're, we're strong collaborators?
Absolutely, and thank you for your question. I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Roberts and Mr. Nichols for meeting with us last week to align our efforts. Mr. Friedman, Mr. Perkins, and I met with Mr. Roberts and Mr. Nichols last week so that we could absolutely do that, to align our efforts. We see this in three areas, prevention, restoration, and logical consequences, right? So that's how we look at student behavior overall, and just to, the, many of the preventative strategies that you've listed here, we have discussed as well. Making sure that we have alternatives for students, that we are showing them positive ways to be productive, and making sure that we do have that sense of belonging for them and that we have avenues for them to connect with that are, that in lieu of those unproductive kinds of behaviors. We want to make sure that we are taking care of students in terms of their physical safety and, and their social emotional safety. So we have that as a team approach, looking at everything from the physical facility and how it lends itself to physical safety, looking also at how we're reaching out to kids so that they can express to us if. kids so that they can express to us if they are in danger in any way, and that we have those open lines of communication, and that we are utilizing our counselors, our social workers. It's not just about gang prevention, but it's also about making sure that kids are safe in every way. But particularly if they feel like they are being pulled or drawn, or if they're already in a gang and they're looking to get out, right? How do we support them throughout? So, Mr. Roberts and I, you know, we talked about that a little bit last week, and how we can make sure that our systems serve as a complement to the efforts that are happening in the city. We're not competing, we're complementing each other. We have our specific view on what kids are saying. So, specifically for our team approach, we're listening to what kids are saying, what they're talking about over social media, their specific coded language that, you know, some of us over 50 may not get.
That's right.
So, but kids will, you know, kind of show in various ways and forecast what they're planning to do and how they're, what they need. So, we want to make sure that we have a coordinated effort between our social workers, our counselors, our assistant principals, our deans of education as well, our deans of student behavior, as well as our city partners to make sure that our kids, whatever they're telling us and forecasting and showing us, that we're able to meet those needs, working with their families, making sure that we have workshops for families on how to identify flagging behaviors and when students are presenting themselves as if they're being groomed for gang activity. So, we want to make sure that we're working with our parents. A lot of times, parents will reach out to us and say, "What do I do? I think that my child might be involved or is getting involved in this. Can you help me? What can I do?" So, the coordinator that we're planning to bring onboard will work with our school teams so that we can provide those workshops for our parents, our workshops for our guardians as well, a lot of grandparents, aunties and uncles who are stepping in the role as primary parent. We want to make sure that we have support and resources for them too. And so, I'm just excited about this collaboration.
Well, thank you. I'm really glad to hear that. And, you know, one of our, a thing that's important to the Gun Violence Prevention Commission is that we know about these things so that we can help promote them in the community and maybe even expand the opportunities available. But I'm really excited to hear that and appreciate it. And I'm hopeful too, that Haley has been a fantastic partner, and I don't know if she would be the person or not, but it would be great if we could have an ongoing liaison to attend our Gun Violence Prevention Commission meetings, in addition to Chris, to just give us some insights on our growing partnership.
We're a step ahead of you there, Councilman. We appointed Haley Poland as our point of contact--
All right. All right. Great.
--with Mr. Roberts just last week.
Great.
So, she is our point of contact, and she does oversee kind of the physical safety and the social-emotional safety of students. So, we thought it would only be fitting for her to serve as that point of contact.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. White.
Okay.
And, Mary, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffery?
Yes. As we're talking about gun violence prevention, one question. I know we have a limited amount of SROs in the school system, but I do have a question. We had a, two weeks ago, we had an incident, gun incident at William Fleming High School. Actually, we were in chambers when that event happened. My question is, have there been any discussions about gun metal detectors in the schools? And I'm just curious, have there been any conversations regarding that?
Well, those conversations are ongoing when it comes to how to make sure that our students stay safe. So, certainly, metal detectors always comes up as a means of, well, is this another way that we can keep kids safe? And it's not that we are opposed, but let me just offer this as food for thought, if you will, that some of the things that get in the way of that discussion have to do with student behavior, even when you're thinking about how to come into a school. When students or community members or anyone's really determined to bring a gun into school, they're not necessarily going to come through the front door, right? So, unless we have every entrance covered. And not only that, those metal detectors have to be manned, right? And so, when they're manned, who are they going to be manned by? We're already kind of short with our SROs. So, we don't want our teachers to have that kind of responsibilities or staff members. So, it is, it becomes a very complex discussion about who's going to man, the bottleneck that it creates when students are coming in, some of the behaviors that happen as a result of the bottleneck, certainly the cost because they would have to be in not just one or two schools, right, that we were talking about throughout. But certainly, and so that's the discussion on the back end. The front-end discussion, which I believe is mostly important, most important, is that prevention and restoration side, right? How to make sure that we're connecting with students and their families so that those metal detectors are only used in unique circumstances. For instance, when we know that tensions are running high at a game, for instance, and we want to make sure everybody's safe there. But on the, we believe that the work that we do on the front end to make sure that kids are communicating with us, when they see something, they say something. Let's take the incident at Fleming, for instance, as an example. Our students, our staff members, our administrators acted quickly and swiftly so that everybody stayed safe. It is because, you know, we wanted to make sure that we have those open lines of communication. And because we did, we were able to prevent any other problematic behavior. That's a success story. Certainly, we didn't want it to happen in the first place, but the system worked the way that we wanted it to in terms of having, keeping everybody safe and no one got hurt in that incident. And that's because those open lines of communications are open. We also want to make sure that we're investing in our students, making sure that we're enhancing character education and those kinds of things so that kids will know exactly what's expected of them, how to behave, how not, what not to do in school. And that is from pre-K all the way through 12th grade. So, if we spend more time there, we believe that we will need fewer of those kinds of, other kinds of constraints on a school overall, which I do believe could be a strain on administration and on our teachers, and could prevent, have some other domino effect that we're not anticipating.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got one question. Let me ask--
Sure.
That's a good question.
Thank you, Susan White. Let me ask you a question. Given my background in criminal justice and realizing that there's a direct correlation between the lack of education involvement in crime, the students that you expel, that are expelled, is there any educational alternative for them at the time? Does the school system still have that? I know it used to be a while back.
We do as a last resort. We certainly do. And then, we also have alternatives, for instance, at Noel C. Taylor, that if a student cannot be educated or should not, and they're comprehensive high school, we do have an alternative for them.
Okay. That's a concern that we have with guns in school because it looks like it's making a turn back, it's coming back. And I'm hopeful, you know, we hope and pray that it doesn't happen. But, and I certainly understand the issue with metal detectors in school, but I'm just hoping and praying that the system that we have, that you have in place, will help us because I've always had a concern with kids with book bags, and you don't know what they have in them. And it looks like now emotional issues, things that, the trauma that kids are bringing from home will come in there. And by the time resource officers or police gets there, there's been a lot of damage done before they're done. And it's no reflection on, you all are doing a good job, but that's the thing that concerns me because of people that I have in the educational system. And I just hope that those things work out, but it seems like there's a spike now in gun violence coming back in schools. And we just want to be aware of that and about that. Councilman Carr, in the next assessment or assessments that's coming up, I'd like to know what kids think about guns, or guns or weapons in schools because we all dislike it, but it seems to be a reality now that that's coming in. And they see it at home, in the communities, and a lot of the issues that relates to retribution and those things come up. So, that's just a concern we have, and we're trying, as we work with our police and sheriff's offices, and trying to make sure that you have people in the schools to cover that eventuality if it comes up. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask that question.
Thank you. Thank you. And we do, again, that's the reason why we take so much value in all of our employees. Our employees connect with our children. They talk with them, and it's important for children to talk with one another. I was just, I was at William Fleming that very morning, and there was a student who was having a rough morning. She had three friends, had a couple go around her to offer her support, and then the counselor offered her support as well. That's what we mean by wraparound services, that our students take care of our students, our teachers, and our educators take care of each other and our kids too. And I know that I'm elementary, but, you know, I believe that through that type of love and support, we can be productive in that we can get more from our kids through that type of love and support and rely less on those things that constrain our schools.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Dr. Jameson, that's all we have.
Well, thank you. That's all we have. I just wanted to take a minute to thank you all again for making time for these conversations. I hope, as you've seen, they're really productive for us, at least two different measures that I hope you saw presented here today, a result of the last conversation we had today. So, we listen, we listen carefully, and we appreciate the breadth of stakeholders that you all can bring to us as well, and as well as our ongoing conversations with our buddies. So, thank you all for your time.
Well, thank you. And before we adjourn, I'm going to break away a little bit and ask you all to do something for me. I understand that Ms. Cindy is going to be leaving us next month, and this is the last time we'll be together. And I want to ask everybody if you could stand and give her a hand. Thank you. Cindy, I spent my term on the school board and over here, matter of fact, I call you just as much sometimes over here than I did when I was on the board. But thank you so much for your service, and we're going to miss you, and I wish you well as you turn the page and go forth. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms., Dr. Jameson, and if you want to adjourn, and then we'll adjourn after you do this meeting.
Thank you. We will adjourn.
All right.
And we'll recess, Mary.
All right. Counsel will be in recess until about five minutes. We're going to push it five minutes. We'll take a break. Thank you.